Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We want to welcome everybody. We'll start with the prayer from Steve Ayers and Lightline Connect Church. All the way.
Let's pray. What we got now? We just thank you for your love and your grace. We just thank you for your forgiveness. And Lord, I pray that you continue to guide the men and women that lead our community, give them wisdom and guidance each and every day. And Lord, I pray that you look after them, their families, and our community. And we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mark?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Beverly?
Martin?
Here.
Again, before you, the June 5 regular council meeting minutes. Any corrections? Additions? Megan Mostu approved it during second.
Second.
Roll call.
Eggland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Again, before you, the bills. Any questions?
The Werler one, I know for nuisance hauling, have we got any payments back out of that re-leasement?
I don't believe so. How does that work? Did they get assessed the taxes? The property on Chicago Avenue. I know they were waiting to sell that property and then some of the proceeds from the sale to pay that off.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I see the Vashel Plowing, the little leak concession stand. Did we get all of that issue resolved? I had several HPA members asking me questions about it.
Yeah. What it was, there's a six-inch cleanout over there by that place center. It was overgrown with grass and the lid was, had been hit with a mower, don't know how long ago, and it was full of rocks and cans, candy wrappers. So he came down and ran his auger through it and then we tried to rinse it out and we camered it. And we came in from the parking lot side. That was like 485 feet. And we get it all that out, put the thing, pin it out.
Did he take a look at the women's restroom? I know they were having some issues with that toilet specifically.
Yeah, we pulled, we pulled it off ourselves.
Okay.
And he just came down to swamp that out and there was a bunch of flushable wipes that were laundered up in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
What do we all, Mike, we'll know for?
Reimbursements for, I think there were door prizes for the car show.
Oh. The railcom communications for the 2023 Ranger, lights and radio and stuff. Is that the new little red truck? Have we bought that truck just to pull the mower around?
No, we bought it to replace the little blue Dakota.
Okay.
And that's what the little blue Dakota pulled that mower around quite a bit.
Okay, I just hope they didn't do that. You know, could use a fire explorer or something to pull the mower.
Yeah, that would need a bunch of money put into it.
Go take the chase crowd with me.
With Sixmo's invoice, where do we stand up with them? How far are they billed in?
We, out of 238, we're down to 85,005.18 or 80.
And do they, they have construction management, is that number correct?
Yes.
How should we pay the bills? Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Mark?
I'm paying.
Eggland?
Yes.
Notice of public hearing, you may hail June the 28 zoning office at 4:00 PM to consider a request by NIMCO Food for a setback variance. So that's coming up June, no, June 28.
Did they submit plans with this? Anybody know?
That's what I was, I wanted to see where the setback's gonna be.
I saw you that the surveys there, survey sticks there in the grass, basically if you would continue straight through the escurt. I saw survey sticks there. I don't know if that's where they're looking to do something. Do you know, Cheryl?
Do you know, Cory?
Not 100%, no.
Give us, give us 80%. What do you think?
I believe it's going right there in that parking lot, in that building that they purchased across the street there.
They'll leave in heat building, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's gonna go, be on the west side of that, not by the street.
Oh, yeah.
So that, if you're a setback, they're gonna be on the street.
They'll be close. They'll be real close.
Yep. Front and side, you're gonna be.
Okay.
Cory, could you ask Mike if when he sends us this stuff, if he can send a print? Easily he does.
Sure. And Mike's back next week, he's on vacation.
Oh, okay. Yeah, easily he sends a print so we have a better idea of what's going on. Thank you.
Okay. Board's commission, the planning commission met May 8 about a zoning change. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions on that? And Board of Zoning Appeals met June 7. The vote on a conditional use permit for 721 Dorf Main, minutes are in the packet. Any questions on that?
You have to vote to approve this.
I'm sorry?
You have to vote to approve this.
The zoning change, I have to bring legislation on?
Okay.
Any like?
Yeah.
Conditional uses and stuff like that.
Okay. Committee of Reports, Finance Committee met June the 14th. Minutes are in the packet. Any highlights on this one?
Well, I know, I think page two was missing. I have everyone's packet that was scanned to you guys. I emailed you earlier to see if we could put a copy out of page two for everyone. So, missing some stuff that you guys weren't able to see. First, we talked about a few topics. We had a little, about a two-hour meeting. First medium was talking about the enterprise lease agreement, police department, village street department, they're looking to possibly join that. I know Carl, I think it was Nate Watson from Enterprise has been here and talked to us and he's talked to the committee before on it. The police department does have contingency money set aside for a cruiser, which would be about half the cost of, instead of putting the money upfront, which would be about, what was it, fully furnished cars, how much, or about 90,000 feet?
Well, right now, the, from statewide, it's 63,000 for this year. That was for 2023, uh, what the price will be.
The fully stock?
Yeah.
Yours, yours was 90, wasn't it, Cory?
Yeah.
So, and normally we set aside contingency money for it and what the yearly payments would be for the police department, it would be about half of what their contingency is, so the money's in the budget. And then Cory was looking at getting rid of two, two vehicles, I guess back on the police department. They were looking to get rid of, get one new police cruiser, but get rid of two. Get rid of the 2011 Crown Vic and the 2013 Ford Taurus and put it through the gov bid process online, try to sell it outright. And Cory was looking at getting two Mini Dumps, two-wheel drive, and get rid of a 2000 Ford F3, E, or F350 and a 2004 Ford E350.
It should be.
Both of those F350s.
What is that, 2004? Is that Troy's truck?
No, that's an 09 E250.
Okay, what's?
It should be F9.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, those are both Mini Dumps now, correct? And you're looking to get rid of.
Yeah.
And so, talk to Cheryl on Cory's budget and money and taking part of a program like this, and Cory typically has the money in his budget to cover something like this too for the payments. He was gonna get updated pricing because they had priced it out for four-wheel drives. And he was gonna sell his outright also in gov bid. The lease agreements for acquired, or for the police department and for the street department was gonna be 60-month lease. And the committee was in favor of trying out this program, but we want the council's opinion in approval on moving forward with this.
And this is for the 2024 year.
Yep, but, but you had to have something for August.
Well, I had to have, I'm doing it with statewide. I have it, and I talked to Carl today. He was supposed to be giving me some more numbers because he thought the Durangos were cheaper, but they don't come built. So, and checking on the pricing of building the car, you're looking at $10,000 to $13,000 at Railcom, is what they've been building to defi speeds and the sheriff's offices and sports, who cages and everything, so, which statewide they all, the package deal, what they.
So, through COVID, through the COVID dollars that we received, we bought the two new cruisers, right?
Yes.
And those were just additions?
Yes.
Wasn't the plan to eliminate two older vehicles as part of this? As part of that eventually? Basically, we had to hold them for a certain amount of time or something? We talked about that too. I was, a lot of my questions during the meeting.
So the problem is, we eliminate vehicles and we no longer qualify for the enterprise for it. We are just at that borderline.
I guess, how many vehicles do you think we need?
What we got.
I guess is, I mean, do we need to send the cruisers home with officers?
Yes.
I guess, can you elaborate a little bit on that? Why, why do we, why is that? Why?
Why? Because we have an emergency call out, we need to drive the personal vehicles, get the, get in a wreck, come into an emergency in a personal vehicle, all right? Village is gonna be liable. Okay? Two, we sit 20-some miles away from the sheriff's office. Sheriff's office doesn't have units up here on the west end, they can come back and officer up. So the units that have, live in town here, they're the ones that are getting called to come home, or to respond.
How often does that happen?
Maybe once, twice, maybe once a month sometimes. So it doesn't matter how often it happens, it could happen.
Typically, and with your staffing numbers, you usually got two, two patrol?
No, I'm down two.
So, I guess, can you talk through how many officers you typically have on shift? Or like, obviously?
Right now, it's been one, maybe two, depending on the shift, because we're down two officers right now. And you can't, everybody wants to depend on the sheriff's office backing us up. That's not going to happen, all right? They don't hardly have units up here on the west end all the time. All right? You can't run a police department with one-man shifts or cruisers, all right? If we don't have enough cruisers for. Right now, we got the perfect numbers for the cruisers.
Which is currently two, two, or three explorers, two, two 2020s?
Yeah, two 21s.
21s.
One 18, a 15, a 13, a 12, and an 11. And we're getting rid of two.
Is your?
So we'll be down to six.
Is your Crown Vic counted in there?
Yes.
So that's one of those.
Yes.
So the 21 and the 18, those, those are all the explorers?
Yes.
Then you, you, will I get rid of?
The Taurus and the Crown Vic will be traded in for a new one. I talked, and trade those towards a new one.
And that still leaves you, you count that Dodge in?
Yes. That's why I wanted to keep all the vehicles, because I knew we would only qualify. Kent Miller and I did this back in, beginning in 2019, right? For this program. We did not have enough cars. We picked up the two on the COVID money. All right? Then we got the forfeited one. So that's why I wanted to explore enterprise, because it might be a cheaper way to go. You know, if you tell me I have a $30,000-year contingency fund and I go to do my budget this year and I find out it's not how it works. Okay? All right? Should've been, that money should've been rolling over year to year. It didn't work that way. So if you, like, guys want to come up with probably $80,000 at the beginning of the year, all right, to buy a new cruiser, then that's fine. Okay? But that 30,000 doesn't roll over year to year. I should've had $90,000 there sitting there, all right? Beginning of this year.
Didn't it used to, Cheryl? That's supposed to work. So what did we do with it?
We asked that same question. So if other line items in his department were overspent, she took it out of that money to pay, without transfer money.
So you're saying it was self-inflicted?
Possible overtime salaries.
Oh. So who's demanding you sell those two cruisers?
You?
You mean, who's demanding to sell?
You keep saying you gotta keep those two cruisers.
No, we're getting, we're, we're getting, that's the way the program works, so, he sat here and explained that to you guys in council, all right?
He says they'll do one for one, he's looking to get rid of two and just get one.
Yeah.
That was his, that was his suggestion, nobody here.
And we're for sure going with that leasing company. That's what they're talking about now?
I know, but.
How many he trades, that doesn't, has nothing to do with anything until we decide whether you're gonna do that for it. So we really don't decide whether that's gonna happen.
The lease part. Yeah.
So, I guess, can you elaborate? So if you were to sell the two, and it, basically you're committing to enter into the program with all of the vehicles.
Yeah. You can get out of that program at any time. Yeah.
So you're only leasing really one, one vehicle from PD?
Yes.
And Cory, you want to lease two. But you're not committing to every vehicle within the?
Correct. No, just like, no trucks, no nothing, just PD. Right? It's not committing to any of them. Other than the, the issue. The problem is, you gotta have the whole village, you gotta have all of our vehicles.
You have to. So you are committing all of your vehicles to the program though? There, you don't have to do the main program with them or anything.
No.
But you have to count them.
You have to count every vehicle that you have.
Yes.
Other than the latter trucks, because they don't count those.
Are we gonna go with that leasing company?
Well, the committee voted 3-0 to.
One thing was, you know, you get $90,000 times two vehicles, Cory wants to replace, and you get one for chief that, you know, let's say 60, 70,000, and you're at 180, you're at $250,000. Or you make, you know, his was 13, between 12 and 15,000 a year. This is before he got numbers crunched and yours was, you weren't quite sure on yours yet, because your price is, well, let's say we had to pay $45,000 a year to lease them instead of going up to $250,000 upfront.
I think you sound like a poor person. A poor person doesn't ask how much it costs, they ask how much is it a month?
Yeah.
Like, for his, it was between 12 and 1500 bucks, if I remember right.
Yeah. Depending on the vehicle, yeah.
I guess I was on the assumption when he was here talking, that it was all or nothing. So all of your vehicles, you're committing to a lease program, not just entering, basic, I guess. Number-wise. I'm trying to understand how that conceptually works. So you're committing to enterprise, saying, yeah, we're going to enter the lease program with every one of our vehicles, but you're only leasing three?
You can lease as few or as many as you want to.
You want at any time.
At any time.
They'll take those 20.
They count our 20, how many of our vehicles?
We got 21.
In order to be qualified under the program. But then you go and say, hey, we want to lease these police cars. It doesn't mean we can't keep running those other ones that we already own, as long as we want to. But then when we want to replace one of them, then we could say, hey, you know, next year we want to, you know, Cory's got another truck or something he needs, and we're pulling this one out, gonna want to replace this one with a lease. And then you kind of are, as long as you're in the program, you're rotating them in and out.
So they do all your inventory, all the vehicles we have from the village, they list them all, they, they figure out the mileage, the make, model, VIN number, everything else. And then they'll come back to us maybe in a year and say, well, if you're looking to trade something in, this is the one that we'd recommend for you to trade in, because there's the most maybe equity in it, or it's nickel and dime you to death. We don't really plan on doing the maintenance program by the sounds of, with any of the vehicles that are in our fleet. But they would come in and give suggestions on which ones that they would recommend for us to trade in to get another new vehicle in the future. But you're not committed to any, but you can just write these three out for the next five, seven years, whatever you want to do, and wait till the lease is up. They might tell you, three years in the lease, now's the time to sell it. Now's the time to buy it. I mean, then.
And it is leased to home.
Yes, leased to home.
Yeah. So Eric, do you want to propose this project and you can vote on it?
Well, Mike.
And then he can bring it back as a paper?
I had a lot of questions that I asked the chief anytime, all the same questions that you ask about, how many do we need? How many, I mean, how many officers we have? How many shifts are in it? How many people are working all the same time? Whether or not we need them, I understand if we eliminate vehicles, then you also don't qualify for lease programs, you have a minimum of 20.
I think the main thing we need to do now is just make sure that we all either don't want it or we want it. We need to take a vote on that, and if we want it, then he can go ahead with planning, he can go ahead and brand it up. Propose.
I make motion to join the enterprise lease agreement.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Eggland?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
The next item we talked about was the pool, the pool house splash pad project. Asked Cory and Cheryl to have packets available for you guys tonight. I know we don't meet again until July, middle of July.
No.
No. So give you guys a kind of look over all the pictures, renderings, 3D stuff. Asked Cheryl for some financial stuff. I don't think I've seen those out here, Cheryl. If you're able to provide what monthly payments would be, what, what the rates you've currently got, what?
Because we got a surprise on Friday. A nice one. We are on round four of the ARPA money for the other grant. We asked for $795,000 for the water tower. We were approved. We got our official, official letter, but they put the list out Friday. So the money that we've been spending from, on the water tower, if they came on capital projects, can go back in when it's reimbursed. And it will go back into the pool fund. I told Mike, Mark, that I'm looking to see exactly how much we're talking about, but it could be a nice little chunk. Because we can't put it into a fund it did not come out of. When it gets reimbursed, but that's a lot of money.
So that was due in the capital projects? And you said the dollar realm is roughly 790,000?
794 and some odd.
That's the total. I mean, all of it can't go back into the pool or general fund. I mean, that's, she's gotta go back and look at what line item she paid for.
Some of our purchase orders were from the water fund, and most of them were for, from capital projects. So you could spend the water tower money, or spend the reimbursement money only for the water tower, but it could still back into the account it came out of. Because I can't use the water money for the pool, but I can use capital projects for the pool. So that's a new number I'm working on.
Are we also working on, like, some sort of number of what it's gonna look like to pay our lifeguards, to, you know, run the electricity? Because I know we discussed not charging an entrance fee, like, what those numbers look like. Because I'd hate to open up this awesome facility and then not be able to run it.
We talked about that too.
We talked about all that.
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen any of those numbers.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to figure out. I mean, costs are on it, the chemicals are on it, the lifeguards, we're gonna pay them more, we need more lifeguards. Are we gonna have lifeguards, since there's been a whole year of no lifeguards here in Hicksville? Are we gonna have any lifeguards? You know, normally we had another four or five of them from the previous year, and then you add two or three more, you know, try to get the number to 10. But we're gonna have to have more than that. You know, the budget, the budgetary number that came out was like 3.57 million, and I know Hicksville Community Fund had like 800,000 committed, and there's a possible grant for 500,002 that we're not far enough along that we can actually even apply for that one yet. But same thing, we have concerns on a lot of lifeguards, and you know, how much it's gonna cost to run it. So we're kind of waiting on some budgetary numbers, and she had talked to some banks and tried to figure out exactly what our monthly payment would be and for how many years we could do it, some, you know, 20-year, 30-year. First rates, first interest rates I seen, I thought was quite a bit higher than what I thought they were gonna be. But I know one of the banks was waiting on more of a firm budgetary number like as, and we were, we got like a VIN number from, you know, a VIN package. But we're just basing off Sixmo's price, and so, it's a lot, I mean, it's big investments, so we're just kind of waiting on what it's gonna cost per year to run and where that money's gonna come from.
We're just kind of far into this project to just now be seeing those numbers. And that's, I know I'm hearing from people in the community as well, and I stated it as well. I mean, what are we doing?
Every year, we put five to 700,000 from the general fund over into capital projects for big projects. We've already got the well field taken care of, we have the water tower almost done, all the big things that were coming down the road are taken care of. But we still always do that, put it in capital projects. You can let it sit there or you can use it for the pool.
What about Defiance Avenue?
It comes out of store. And they have like 2 million sitting there already.
So, in your notes here, it says we're to the point that any changes to the layout of pool, pool house, splash pad would put us behind schedule and over budget more. We don't have a budget. Well, his initial one from the minutes that he gave Sixmo was, his budget was 3.2 million? Is that what he told him, 3.25, something like that? Three to 3.25, I'd have to go back three minutes. And, okay, three to 3.5, and sorry, 3.57. That's why I meant over budget more than what his eventual last, what he told Sixmo. Do we, can you guys share the budget with us? I mean, we don't have. You should have. There's no budgetary numbers in this. Did you get the email with all the, the layout of everything for all the features and everything? I did, a few weeks ago, when you requested it. That was when you got hold of Charlie and I and asked us about the cost of those splash pad itself? That, all that, that's down to the pending for what they? I guess, but there, there was a couple layout changes in the pool house. I guess that's, I don't, was that final? That's the last number you got?
Changing area?
Yeah. And I, I guess I haven't, just saw these tonight, so I didn't know if there were any other changes. So, I guess I'm not the only other one of council that's seen the budgetary numbers that's not part of the pool. Have you seen any budget?
No, I mean, just the initial one, but that was several months ago, and it was still pretty vague as to what it was gonna look like, which is kind of an estimate, but no, not any final, nothing to this point.
I think we definitely need to see those numbers, obviously. The design is, I mean, you're saying we're past that point, and we don't have, I guess we don't even have all the information here.
That was the one we're gonna go down. Suppose we're all up and it's down to 3.57 for pool construction costs, that doesn't include any engineering or anything.
So with this, I mean, if they've got it designed this far, do they not have a budgetary number for operations either? I have not seen any, I have not seen anything from them. The last one I seen for operational costs was from Standard Aquatics. Which Standard Aquatics was? The, the first one then.
They were kind of, just a, just a general cost.
Yeah. And that was a year and a half. Which is not the same exact size.
Exactly.
I don't know, it seems like there's a lot of information unknown for us to be at this point in the project, and obviously, I know the foundation, we had that meeting, I guess. I, as a council, feel like we need more information to be making these decisions as a whole, collectively. Obviously, there's, there's a committee, but the rest of the council doesn't have all the information, and I know, like, the foundation was just briefed about a week and a half, week and a half ago, two weeks ago. Yeah, they had, they had ideas or they had recommendations, they would like to see more changing rooms, more restrooms, and he had brought up the very following day, because you met with them, it had been about two weeks ago. You met with them on Tuesday, and you went and give them all the concerns you guys had, and Sixmo give all the responses on, on everything, on time-wise, not getting it done in 2024.
This is not setting well with that committee.
In the pool house area, or the splash pad area? There's a separate restroom, there's one restroom, like unisex restroom there with a pump house area.
Eggland?
A smaller one.
Okay.
And they'd like to see more changing, there's more restrooms in that area.
Have we not shown them that design ahead of time?
I don't know.
I've seen this today, the night.
I know we hadn't seen it, but I didn't know, you know, I'm not a part of that committee, I didn't know had they not seen it? No one had seen these renderings until after we?
Recently.
Had sent it to the Sixmo and after. So at this point, if it's changed.
You've been sending them to Kirk, Ken, yeah?
Yeah. Kirk's been in copies of all the minutes for my, couple of my renderings.
You guys certainly want more restrooms in that little section, don't you?
They also wanted more concrete area for benches around the one outside. It's just the responses, you have that response, I guess. I know it was sent to Kirk, who's on the committee, who was hoping to relate it to everyone.
Why aren't we making them the same length buildings? Nothing else, just for the cosmetic feature of it?
I guess, obviously, we don't want any negative perception around any of this, and I think, and I think if we need a little bit more time to get this right, I mean, this is a once-in-a-lifetime project. If it means that it's not gonna be open by Memorial Day?
It won't be open next year, period.
So, so?
Zero.
Then why is that?
Because that thing's gonna be resubmitted ODH. We're gonna, we're just miss the window. We're gonna miss the bid window, we're gonna miss the construction window.
What is the win, I guess, the OD?
What is the win, I guess, the OD, ODH, you can only submit to ODH at a certain time limit?
Well, it's like a 90-day period and we can't, we can't go to bid until, you know, ODH has already approved all this stuff. So any further changes between square footage or any type of civil engineering, which, you know, additional concrete would be more civil engineering, EPA has to get involved due to everything, so the company's sewer back there. There's just a, I mean, I've been sending you the minutes as well, it's just a ton of stuff, but yeah, we won't, we won't be ready to go next year. It'll be 25.
I'd rather it went to 25 and we get budgets and, and everybody on the same page than to rush, try to rush through and have it done for next year. There's nothing wrong with 25, but we're, we're not ready. In my opinion, we're not ready.
I would have liked to have seen that decision made before we tore down a pool.
It wasn't going to be worth filling again.
You've stretched it out longer before, it could have.
We keep dropping, we kept dropping money in it. Patching, I mean, I don't ever saw, I got the help, went down, we had a pump issue last year and it is patched, looks like a quote. I couldn't believe, I had never seen it before until I could take one of my small pumps and I was like, oh my gosh, it was just incredible and they just kept leaking and filling it up and put a lot of money in it.
Slow, so we've got to.
But, I mean, I, I mean, we can, motion for an executive session with litigation, I mean, to discuss this farther now or make a motion for that, all that stuff we can do, Troy, or?
I mean, it was possible. Litigation.
I don't.
Try to get a result and then also we need executive session.
Session for personnel.
So two separate.
Do we want to do that now or do we want to? Do you guys have anything that you want to?
Well, we can keep them here for executive session.
We can?
Yep.
Okay.
To get a result.
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lupper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
So we'll do the chief, you want to do yours first?
Sure.
And then everybody can leave and then when we're ready for the committee, we'll have you back in.
I guess you have to make.
Okay. I'm going to recommend your plans be put back on the police department. Make a motion. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Definitely no.
Martin?
Yes.
Lupper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Okay. The committee met with our council, we can't go into executive session to discuss. So we're going to discuss it now or we could go back to committee, the finance committee, but do you want to air your concerns now? So I tried, but you know, you've got to play by the rules.
I, I, I'll start. Greg Slattery, I'm on Hicksville Community Fund, we represent.
Could you please go up and use the microphone?
No.
Have to.
My name is Greg Slattery, I am, I guess I'm a trustee on the Hicksville Community Fund, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Been involved in raising monies for the splash pad project. I believe we're over 700,000 now, is that correct? Close to that. A lot of very generous donors and when we, when we first started this process, it was a discussion about a splash pad and along, along the road there, it morphed into an aquatic center, including knocking down the pool, pool house, et cetera. It makes sense that it be one project, you know, versus a piecemeal project, makes sense, okay? One of the pieces that really jumped out on us is that if the pool house would be designed for dual use, because there's economy of scales there, okay? They had restrooms and, and changing rooms that could be used by the pool house, by the, by the splash pad users when the pool is closed. That's just a design issue of the pool house, okay? You know, put your head to something, you could probably design a, a door that would be shut when the pool was closed. We had also gotten far enough that I think we'd come up with a 4,000 to 5,000 square foot splash pad, concrete all the way around. We've gotten to the point where we actually had, had identified a number of the features that would happen, a separate pump house. But when the discussion about an aquatic center came forth, it makes sense, reasonable people, you know, the economy of scales. So when we received that, our first request for input and we got like a 10,000-foot view of, of things that were going to happen, two things stood out right away and that was, it looked like the pool house was not a dual use and there was going to be one restroom over here for the splash pad. And then, and then there was like, we had, we had envisioned it, an area of concrete around it, especially if you think about being a young mother, if I'm, I guess I could be a young mother now, basically. I shouldn't go there. If I'm sitting in the concrete on less, which would be the north side, I can keep an eye on my toddler who's at the splash pad and look through the fence and see my 12-year-old doing flips off the diving board or whatever, right? So it makes sense to have the concrete all the way around, okay? So when we got that 10,000-foot view, two, two, two immediate things came forth, not even getting into the details, okay, but hey, what's this one restroom for? And we had envisioned concrete. And then the feedback we got was minutes that said, basically you can't do that, we're too far along. And it's out of budget. Well, where's the budget? Kind of the same questions that maybe I heard council asking as well. So we're here representing the donors because we want this thing done right, okay? I feel like donors and even on a, on a taxpayer side, I'll go back to like the school. I hate paying taxes, okay? But it didn't bother me paying that property tax when I go into that school because it was done right, okay? I feel like if the pool is designed right, you know, paid by taxpayer money and the splash pad is done right with all those donors' money, everybody's going to be really proud and happy to have this, it's going to be kind of another jewel for Hicksville. But this process of take a look at this and then two 10,000-foot things we, we say, oh, it's too late for that because of X, Y, and Z, that just doesn't sit well, okay? And I, I feel like there needs to be more detailed involvement in this design phase and it needs to be backed up. Maybe the pool has to wait till 2025. It does, I, I, I'm saying, thinking if you do two phases, maybe the, the splash pad does not have to wait till 2025. I don't know, don't know. I'd be wanting to ask that question and have detailed discussion, but people told me that it didn't happen, okay?
Who told you it's too late?
Minutes from. Minutes were sent to us from. Again, you know, haven't sent in many meetings my life, I know sometimes the minutes aren't exactly what happens, but the minutes were from June 6th.
Well, oftentimes people tell me, well, they said we couldn't do this or they said, I always want to know who they are.
I'll read it to you. What, who was attending was somebody by name of Cory, sorry. Somebody from Chris Blue, architect, aquatics designer, I'm looking at yeses. Brandon Helbert? No, that's a no. Yeah, yes. Somebody by name of Jason Kravin from Lynn Engineer. So there was four people, okay? And I'm just reading from the minutes. Discuss additional restrooms and changing room at the spray ground building. Cory informed Sixmo, the spray ground committee, that they would like an additional restroom and changing room. Sixmo informed, Sixmo informed Cory that 20, of the 20 more spray ground Sixmo has designed, we have never included a changing room and having a restroom separate from the other facilities is very unique. Pump building construction would, would close to double due to the increase. This would put the project over budget, I haven't seen the budget yet, so I don't know how it goes over budget, okay? And then, second thing, would like concrete extended completely over the north end of the splash pad. Cory informed Sixmo that that's what we, some feedback we gave and north side for future seating area. Sixmo informed Cory that the change would increase in design fees from both architects and engineer and would delay project as stormwater has been finished and costs of construction would increase due to new grading, storm water management and concrete. I just was there. The pool's been filled in, I don't see any of the other stuff even happening yet, okay? I understand it would increase something on the design side a little bit, okay? But I didn't see any of that stuff happen yet. So I don't know how you increase something if it hasn't happened yet, okay? So I, I'm trying to speak for, for the group here, so somebody can stop me if I'm not, but I think the major concern is, is that from the 10,000-foot level, the first time we're asked to look at something, the two things we say is basically shot down in the meeting with very little brainstorming on, hey, how do we make this happen? You know, how can we make this happen? He said, nope, can't do that, nope, can't do that. It's very disconcerting when I read that, okay? So the, the, you know, the tail's white and the dog, these guys getting paid to put their big boy pants on, do some thinking and get creative, staying within budget and, and getting done and have a great aquatic center, okay? Concern, okay? So I'm, it sounds like you guys are concerned too. We want us, we want us to see how, we want us to stay positive, we want to continue to fundraise with this. But when we get all done, we want it to be done right and not, oh, we should have done this, we should have done this, especially this early in the design phase, okay? Again, not in a meeting, I'm just reading from the minutes.
What you just said is, is the key in the design phase. It's, it's never too late unless it's been built and it's not been built, it's in the design phase. So your committee and this committee, whoever that committee is, need to get together.
There's a secret hack to get all your favor.
I'm, I'm wondering if, and you guys jump in here, okay? I'm wondering if we actually need to have one or two people at the table advocating for at least the splash pad part of it, okay?
Was anyone from your committee invited to that meeting?
No.
No. No.
Why? Why was that? I mean, if they're funding half the project, why were they not?
It's not half the project, we're, we're funding the, the splash pad entirely.
No, no, I'm not talking about financially half the project, but essentially phase one and phase two. So if they are financing phase one or, you know, half of what's going in, why would they not be invited to those meetings?
I don't know if Kirk's invited to those Zoom meetings.
I'm not sure.
I don't know. My thing was the pool, that's what I've been working on. Everything that was submitted from these guys to me for the splash pad is right here.
And I can't say vice versa, back when this whole project started and was Standard Aquatics doing stuff, Cory was never invited to any of them, even when he requested to be invited to, he was never, he was never invited to one of their splash pad committees. I'll say that. When you talk about budget, March 21st this year, minutes from six mo was Cory says the budget is between two and a half to three and a half. Cory would be okay with the budget to be closer to 3.2 million, which would include all the architectural and engineering fees. Sixmo is going to try to shoot for a $3 million budget to allow for contingencies. Right now we're at 3.57, that does not include architectural or engineering fees, so it's, that's why when they say we're going to be over budget more, this is the reason why I deferate from the very beginning, the budget is set at 3.2 million.
And, and if I'm, if I'm sitting there and I'm only representing the donors for this thing, okay, is we're trying to take advantage of that economy of scale and join all at once, but also it is a separate, you know, a separate spot on the map, okay? And it's a, it's a separate function, okay? So to say we, the money's all mixed in there and we can't separate and say to you how much that is, that's, that's borderline ridiculous saying, we don't know. But we don't know because it hasn't been bid out yet, right? It's all, this is all estimates.
Oh, yeah.
And these guys, that's what they get paid to do, make good estimates, right? Okay? But to say this is going to put you over budget, well, who's budget? Because is this, is this splash pad costing, the splash pad portion 250,000? 400,000? 1.2 million? Now, what is the splash pad portion of it? We don't even know. That, that's, that's what we're saying about the budget. We don't even know, you know, that if we're saying, hey, where's that concrete pad all the way around? Well, that's over budget. How can it be over budget? It was like what our initial asked, okay?
And we talked about when we met, if, if we were not doing the pool and the pool house and the splash pad committee was going to do a splash pad with your own restrooms, your own changing rooms and all your concrete and all your features, even Kyle Jones with Standard Aquatics said $800,000 that you guys were raising was not going to be enough to cover it, it'd probably be over a million dollars. But you would save money if we did all of them at one time.
Yeah.
I think that at that point though in the project, nothing was, you didn't have a concrete design on anything, so you're just pulling numbers out of a hat at that point. That's obviously an estimated guess, but I think what Greg is saying is they've committed to raise $800,000 for the splash pad. They should be privy to the information of how much the splash pad is going to cost. And I understand, I think there was a little bit of a communication issue as far as like the handoff, you know? This is, this is where the splash pad is at. The committee hadn't gone through a selection process for any of the features or any of that stuff, so none of that had been done at all. It was all just done as a placeholder design and I think that there was a miscommunication there in that handoff that I think Cory assumed that it's going to be a, a smooth handle, like this is designed, this is just plug and play into the pool design. That's not the case, it wasn't that. And they just got engaged in the project a week and a half ago, under the assumption that that selections process was still to come. So for them to say, you know what, we're here, ready to make the selection process, let's do it, sorry, that, that's already been done, too late, can't happen.
Well, note thing is, real quick, we spent sixteen, over 16,000 dollars with Kyle.
Yeah.
He never got the opportunity to do the project. We, that money's out the window. We paid him thinking, why would he not have the opportunity? That was donor's money. Got wasted. And then all of a sudden, it's six mo. But I want to go back to it make, to your last point, they're about the economy of the scales, okay? If this pool house is designed in a way that you're going to have multiple restrooms and multiple changing rooms, okay? Have them put their thinking caps on and say, how does this get used by the splash pad when the splash pad is open? Which will be more hours in the pool and how does it get opened, how does it get used when they're both open, okay? And they ought to be able to figure that out. So then you're not asking, oh, we not want some more separate restrooms and separate changing rooms. That, I mean, that goes back to the discussion about if you, if you build them separate, it was going to cost more. Well, some of that splash pad money, what did it cost, $800,000 or $700,000 to build a splash pad, okay? We had firm numbers, okay? Some of that money could be used towards this, towards the pool house to make the pool house nicer and to have that dual use. So I think, I think that we need to have at least someone or a couple people there advocating for the donors for the splash pad. And I'm not saying getting out of line, I'm saying advocating that it's done right and it's done, thinking the whole thing through. And Cory, Cory's trying to build a pool aqua, aquatic center, okay? And, you know, if, in order to do this, if we need to separate again and us go on a different patch of ground somewhere to get this done, we can do that.
I think, I think you just need to get a couple of your people to get with a couple of these people and get your ideas put together and don't let an engineer, I've been in practice most of my life and I hate engineers.
If I go to a meeting and I ask a simple question like that and the engineer tells me, you can't do it, it's too late, I'm going to come unglued. I'm going to come unglued.
Then, well, that's fine. We're going to come completely unglued. But just say, hey, it's not too late because I'm the one that's telling you what to do.
I've seen him. The fuel house.
Yeah, it's, 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 an engineer, you're only paying him to guide you.
Yeah.
You get what you want. And if you're not getting what you want, get a different engineer.
Give me options and give me an estimate of what those options are going to do. That's, that's the answer. It's not, I can't do it, it's delayed.
Yep.
All we've done is, is knock down the pool and push some dirt in the hole. So, and I get it. I mean, when it really starts costing you money is when you've been in documents, you start doing change orders. That's when it costs money.
Yes.
So, uh, I hate, I hate the idea of this saying that, oh, this can't get done till 2025. I hate that. But I'm not the one that decided that, okay? I hate that idea, okay? I would like, if you, if you actually have to delay that long and, um, I don't know.
Any other thoughts from council? What's your thoughts? You meet, when, when do you meet next time? Do you have tomorrow?
Tomorrow, 11:00.
Your meeting with who?
Sixmo.
And none of us knew about your meeting with, or we're not, we're not to be included in any meetings, sir?
Five or six months. Every, every Tuesday, 11:00.
I want to commend the committee. It was about a year ago. You came, met with me maybe eight months ago. If you guys wanted to start this, I'm not sure where we could be on a pool. But probably in a couple of years, maybe we would have patched the old pool. I don't know. But thanks you guys who got us going the right direction. So I think we just need to stir it.
All right, we can step back, step back for a second and make sure it's done right.
These people need involved in every meeting that the village has pertaining to that property. These people need to know.
Corey's defense, you know, he has Kirk Collins.
Yeah, he's been sending, he's been sending all the minutes to Kirk since, uh, first of April. All the meeting minutes, all the drawings, all everything, so.
Oh, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that some or all those weren't forwarded as well. Okay, I'm not saying that. Okay, I'm saying the first time we were asked what we think, okay?
Is, is resolved that last meeting, yes.
Well, it basically already been decided because it was ready to go to bid. You hadn't even approved it. None of the other council members had really seen it.
We're still talking about finance, par, and budgets and different things like that, so.
I think, obviously moving forward, I think everybody wants the best solution.
Yep.
You know, everybody wants the best project at the end of the day. And if that means that we need to go back to the drawing board with Sixmo and say, hey, you know what? We need, what's the timeline? Give us a timeline. Obviously, it's already been, you said it was submitted to the ODA or ODH or?
ODH.
ODH.
What, what is submitted to ODH? What is submitted to ODH?
The, all the plans for the pool and splash pad.
You got any ideas? Did anybody over there see this?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, we seen it for the first time.
Which is splash pad, the splash pad features, which were what Standard Aquatics had put in. I'm not saying that's what they picked out, which is what they had put in the rendering. So every single thing that was in Standard Aquatics layout of the splash pad, which was hired by additional community fund, is in this package.
The features.
The features.
What's tonight's first item?
Which, let me tell you, those features that were chosen were only chosen in an evening, like within an hour, to try to put just a, a monetary package together. We've never visited that again. And I'm not saying they probably are bad. It's bad equipment. I'm not saying that it's not stuff we would choose, but it was thrown together. And that is like, I think that's a little disturbing that someone didn't have a small group of young women or just a couple of people didn't have their input on what equipment should be in this.
In order to get a dollar amount, so we know what we need to raise, they need to say, tell us what features you want.
Yes.
So we basically fill the thing with features, okay, to get a dollar amount, okay? Thinking that at some point in time, you know, we're going to sit down and get the real features we're going to do.
Which was a budgetary number of about 800k.
True, a budgetary number.
Yeah.
If the project were to get pushed back to 2025, does that alter that, the 800,000 that you guys would be contributing?
I think it disappoints people.
I agree. I 100% agree. I know people are asking. They can't wait. The community is very excited about this. Um, you know, they said it. I agree. I'm glad that you guys put in the effort. We're very thankful that you did that. Um, so I would hate for you guys to pull out of the project and to take that money and go elsewhere and, and put that in elsewhere. I'd like to see it be a part of, you know, the community's project.
Well, I, Corey does his job, okay? I have no idea what you do, man, okay? But I, I, first, when I, if I attend that meeting tomorrow, I'm going to challenge that discussion about it can't happen till 2025, okay?
There's nothing wrong with that.
I can interject. You're 100%. I mean, correct. Um, I'm disappointed in what kind of scene this night and hearing about, you know, final, you know, plans and have to move with them. I think we needed some changes also, and we've talked, and 100%, I think we needed to come together and look at some different options. I know we can't please everybody. Somebody's going to have something different. But, um, but I also like the splash pad layout. I like the pool layout. I think it's awesome. I think it's a huge asset. Uh, what these guys have put together, what you guys have put together, putting those two things together and being okay with everything, I think is going to be a huge asset.
Absolutely.
I think we can still need to, like you said, work together and complete this and, and move forward, but.
I think, I would say based on a meeting tomorrow, if you guys, somebody, if you guys want to, want to attend the meeting and have that discussion, but understand, basically go in and say, the splash pad needs visiting again. And we have a timeline based on, based on this submission, all of that stuff. Okay, we have a month and a half to figure out the design or whatever to be able to try and get something done. And I think that discussion needs to be had. Obviously, what's happened has happened. All we can do is put a plan and move forward. And obviously, foundation would like a little bit more input. Um, I think, I don't think any of their suggestions are a bad thing. I think it's, I think it all just improves the project. And then from there, if it takes a little bit more time, it takes a little bit more time. But once again, it's a once in a lifetime project. We need to get it right. So if that means it pushes back, it pushes back.
It sounds like it needs to be more than just a splash pad. It sounds like the layout of the pool house itself for end use hours for restrooms and stuff, additional restrooms possible.
Maybe, maybe it's just a discussion. I mean, that's part of the discussion that needs to be had.
I was, yes, it is part of the discussion. I was, I was surprised when it was not dual use. Because that was one of the main, uh, selling points of doing this all together was dual use.
Okay, so we have a plan?
Yep.
Okay. So I get real quick. Corey, your meeting, so what time? Greg, do you want to attend the meeting?
I'll be there. Hey, Greg, we'll say one thing from reading some of the previous minutes was that it was supposed to all be in one building, dual use type thing. But due to plumbing and the cost of running plumbing for the having the pool house and a pump house for the splash pad being separate, they highly recommended having a separate building with a restroom for the splash pad. That was Sixmo's recommendation for saving money and not having it all in the one, one building. That was just for minutes.
So Corey, can you send Greg, I think it's a Zoom meeting.
On, on that discussion, totally understand that, okay? But I think that does not keep you from discussing dual use of the pool house. Because that, that whole discussion was happening all along. You know, we hadn't talked about the economic scale. So, yeah, we can talk in detail. Thank you. You guys want to tell us?
Everybody's, okay now? Corey, did Greg's contact?
Yeah.
Greg, can you get your contact information to Corey, whether it's an email or? Have you done your report?
I still got, I still got two more things, yeah.
Thank you, Flash.
Mayor, I still got two more for, for my end for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Page two that you guys did not have in your package. We'll see or not. But, um, third topic we talked about was some CDs we had in the church. Cheryl wants to know how we should proceed with these. We thought she should reinvest them in new CDs, that she didn't think we're going to need the money in the near future. The fourth topic was EMS levy, which is another big one. Uh, EMS levy, we continue the discussion of the last five years of EMS funds, the beginning balance at the beginning of every year, the ending balance, uh, for instance, in 2018, our ending balance was 159,000. And over the years, it's still, we keep dropping mainly due to salaries, regular salaries over time. For full-time, part-time employees, the cost for a new EMS, uh, stock in the, I mean, all the supplies, the insurance, the bonding, everything. Uh, the ending balance at the end of 2022, uh, for the starting balance for this year was 29,700. Even with the increase in all the contracts and all the townships, uh, tax check, levy money we currently get, which is about 180,000. It's not enough to pay for all that. One question got asked, general fund money could be spent to offset the shortage? Cheryl said, yeah, but these departments should be self-supporting with the money collected from the levies contract to build around. And she recommended having the five mil levy added, uh, for the third reading, third filing reading tonight, so it can stay on schedule to be on the ballot this fall. Five mil levy would generate approximately 286,000 per year. I do believe Cheryl did say that the plan would be to, if it passed by the taxpayer or all voters, and when the two mil levy, renewal levy would come back up in a couple of years, that, that would not be put back on the ballot to vote on, so.
Okay, any questions for?
What was Finance Committee's recommendation based on the EMS levy?
We didn't actually vote. Um, we talked a lot about it. I know Cheryl wants to have it on there for final reading. I don't know. What were your thoughts?
Well, it doesn't hurt to pass this because all it does is lets it keep going. But there's still, we still have to approve it with three readings to actually put the.
Another legislation after this.
This just gets the auditor basically to certify what the money would be raised by that levy based upon the valuation in the county, and then she sends that back to Cheryl. And then once we get it, then there's another ordinance resolution, whatever, that actually talks about putting it on the ballot.
Yeah, well, and I understand that, I guess. But based on the discussions of the Finance Committee, I guess, what do you, there's obviously a lot more information.
I think it's a lot. I think it's a lot, uh, what we're asking for the five mil. I know we've, we've talked and even Mike's brought up before in different meetings we've had about, you know, general fund money offsetting some of the costs. We don't want to go backwards. Uh, we have EMS and fire in Hicksville. We don't want to take it away from the public. I mean, if people vote a no for it, uh, if we don't have the general fund money to offset that cost, it would be losing some full-time employees and the length of time you call the, call 911, need help. It's going to be, be a lot longer until somebody can show up.
I've had a sit-down with Cheryl. I called Jill Little. I sat with John, talked to John. Bruce has got ideas, being the new chief. You know, we run on a small staff. We have four EMTs basically and a couple of some EMRs and part-timers. I encourage everybody to have sit-downs with Cheryl, who's got numbers. John's got a number. He does the billing. You want, you want final numbers. I mean, we can compile all those together. I share them with the, you know, the board. Got with Jill Little and talked to her about the millages that we actually currently collect and kind of opened my eyes a little bit of how that all works. Thinking we would have increases with current millages. We actually don't. It actually sits about the same every year where assessments would go up, but the millage would actually don't, so. Everything costs more. The training costs more, the equipment costs more, every, you know, everything does. Just nature of doing business with, and housing, you know, emergency personnel, both fire, police, and EMS. I mean, we cover this whole side of the county pretty much like Chief Benning said and Bruce has said. When it comes to the west side, we have to be, you know, protective and cover those services on the side. So we've had townships, you know, Governor Milford, Mark, part of farmer with EMS, they have their own fire department. Milford has come to us and asked for a little bit more coverage here because of EMS services out of Williams County. I'm proud of our staff. I think it's something we need. I know it costs everybody more, but to have those people on call 24/7, 365 days a year, you have to pay them more. Insurance goes up. I mean, but to have that, I mean, everything.
So would the EMS levy be Hicksville city proper, Hicksville township? How does that?
Village.
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 So essentially, we're asking, so we're asking our EMS to serve a greater area, but the village, but the village.
That's all.
We bundle it that though with the contracts, right?
Yeah, we bump the contracts.
That's how that works.
Well, correct. And that's kind of, I guess, where I'm getting at is, I mean, do the contracts need to be increased? I understand.
They were this year.
I understand.
Well, the money that the townships pay us come from their levies that they pass on their residents.
So we're not asking anybody else to increase what they're giving at this point?
Other than what we just did on the contract.
Other than just the contract.
Right, right. They can choose to, I don't know how they can pay, I don't know how the townships work as far as what they can pay towards fire and EMS service. If it's some, if they can pay from stuff other than what their levies are, they, they may be able to. But that's up to them whether or not they want to tax their people more with changing their levies or increasing their levies. But our only control over that is whatever contracts we negotiate with them for what they're going to pay us.
So Cheryl, you made a comment about if it got approved tonight, that doesn't always mean that this will go on the ballot that.
Correct.
That's what I just explained. That just directs the auditor to certify the, the amount that that millage would raise based upon the current valuation of property in the village, um, what it should raise. I think that's very basic patches. But, um, and then that's when you get that figure back and then you say, okay, that's worth it for us to do it or that's not worth it for us to do it. If we decide, then there's another piece of legislation that actually directs the Board of Elections to put it on the ballot. And here's the proposed ballot language and all that, so.
And the deadline for that.
That's why the timing is in August.
Does that initial phase cost us money?
No, no, for the auditor.
Because some of that, right, to put it on the ballot.
When it goes on the ballot is when the money, because it costs to be on the ballot.
But just asking the auditor.
But for the auditor to do her thing and tell her that's just part of the job. That's just part of the job.
Now, can the EMS, if it's a strictly EMS levy, because it's combined.
We have to have combined because we're a combined department.
So as part of this levy, are we talking with Chief Hart about his upcoming capital expenditures at all?
From a fire standpoint?
From a fire standpoint?
I have not, because the, paying the EMS is critical and it's what caused the problem, sort of trying to fix.
I understand that, but I think it was two or three meetings ago, Chief Hart had said that we've got some equipment that's borderline failure. I think fire protection is equally important as that. So I think as part of this whole discussion, we can't just be focusing on EMS. If we, I think we need to be examining the departments as a whole. And, um, I think all of that needs to be taken into consideration, obviously, when we're examining dollar amounts. So I'm okay with the third reading, obviously, if we can figure out what five mil is going to generate.
286,000.
So they've already done it?
No, that's, that's ballpark. This would be the certification, the exact, the exact amount.
So Chief Hart, have you done any pencil and paper on your upcoming capital expenditures?
On the fire side? No, not yet. I can have something next week or two weeks. That's coming.
See, I was, I was also hoping to see financials for the pool because for what Cheryl would forgive from the bank, for what our monthly payments would be, what we'd be paying out of pocket, out of general fund to get a pool going and a pool house. You know, let's say at one time we were looking at $2 million and, for a loan for 2 million. And I always said 4, 4 and 1/2 percent, when we were just kind of ballparking like 19,000 or 20,000 dollars a month. What's going to cost the village to rent, you know, just the pool, just for, just for the, that's not even for running the pool or paying for lifeguards or anything. And, you know, 20,000 dollars a month, let's just say for easy math, times 12 months, that's 240,000 dollars a year. And we're doing a levy to fund an EMS that we need and needs and wants sometimes. I mean, I'd love to have a pool. That's a want. Need, I think we need an EMT and we got to have them staff. And so I'd like, that's why I keep asking for the financials for the, what the pool's going to cost us and then what she's trying to raise for this and what he needs to find out. Because this can go on, could come out of general fund. The pool can come out of general fund. The pool coming out of the same fund.
General fund.
Yeah.
That's no other income.
Correct. But the EMS, paying the EMTs and stuff could come out of general fund.
But you were saying that part of that pool money will come out of capital projects if that 700 and?
94,000.
94,000 is placed in there?
Because we've been paying all along, ever since the project started. But it's split between the water and capital projects. And so when I get reimbursed for that 795,000, wherever it came out of, it sort of can go back into money that we didn't expect to have.
So let's say she paid 500,000 on the capital projects and 294, like water. And that money has to go directly back into those accounts. on the water, and that money has to go directly back into those accounts.
Right. Amazing. It's gonna be outrageous.
Then, so the other thing that Cheryl had mentioned is, we set aside five to six hundred dollars a year in capital projects that have historically been contributed towards water tower, well project. Obviously, we have to find its avenue, and that's sort of the last big one. Hopefully, assuming EPA doesn't come back and make us redo a treatment plan. But, there's that money also that we could potentially accelerate payments on, right, on a pool.
Exactly.
So, hey, obviously, we're, we don't have the hard numbers in front of us to say, like, okay, this, 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 this. I think we need all of those.
I agree, but I made a comment about like CDs that are matured, you know, reinvest them if you don't plan on using them soon, but if, you know, we got like five of one-to-one, the one we got like five of them close to a million dollars, I remember, that are all matured this month, in June, and, you know, that money, you know, what's that, year money for? Well, nothing as of right now.
We just keep investing it.
Keep investing, and making interest off of it, but I was trying to figure out for Cheryl, you know, how much money are we looking to put down towards the pool? How much money, same thing for, I talked to Chief, you know, about the enterprise agreement, he has thirty thousand dollars already set aside for this fiscal year. Is there a chance he can put that thirty thousand dollars towards the 2024 vehicle and make our lease payments a lot less per month, instead of being fifteen hundred dollars a month, maybe they're only three hundred dollars a month, because you're putting down thirty thousand dollars upfront? I don't know if he ever, if he ever asked about, or if he got back with you on it, if you can do that.
I haven't gotten his back, probably Mike.
I think they would let you-
Ask that question.
Since they allow you to trade stuff in towards them, to make your payments less, I'd assume they let you put cash down to do it?
Well, it sounds like, I guess, based on that conversation, the thirty thousand dollars that we thought we were saving, we've obviously absorbed sixty thousand dollars over the last two years in operational expense. So that needs reexamined also. Where is that sixty thousand dollars going? What are our overages? What are, why are we spending sixty thousand more dollars than were budgeted for operations, not capital projects? So that all needs examined also.
Normally, salaries.
I was gonna say, wait, since he doesn't have full staff, he's always got overtime for somebody every week, don't you?
Yeah, and she figures up our salaries line for the budget every year, so.
Well, then that's a further conversation. Why are we not, why are we not able to place or retain staff? I mean, is it compensation, is, I mean-
It's compensation, it's insurance. You know, it's the-
That's obviously a further conversation, you know, because that's a, I mean, we're operating at a deficit here on fire EMS, and that's what's gotten us in this issue. It's gonna get us in the same issue with PD, if we're spending at a thirty thousand dollar deficit a year. So, I mean, it's not as quick as what EMS was, you know, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand or whatever it was, over two, two or three years, but thirty thousand dollars in the red every year will get us there.
We did give, you know, pretty good bonuses this year. I know the county didn't offer raises like we did, to try to get us up to that point where a little bit more appealing, and we kind of drawl to that, and hopefully that helps, that, you know, you keep increasing those.
But I don't think every officer's left just because of that. I mean, some of them went back to their home, didn't they?
Yeah, we had, yeah. So, but one left because of insurance. Think you go to another department, make the same money, and not have to pay.
But we're not gonna be able to compete with every department around here, that's just, we're a small town.
Well, the county has some of the same, they lose officers, but we don't reason-
The reason that Hicksville schools is so great is because they pay their teachers probably the highest salaries in the area.
And they have good insurance.
Great insurance, I mean, we-
We don't wow school.
We could take lessons, we could take lessons from the school and school board, obviously, but at the end of the day, we've got fixed, we've got a fixed budget, and we've got a couple of main contributors contributing to this deficit, that we need to figure out where the dollars are gonna come from to support this. And if that, I mean, and what it sounds like is we can either increase taxes, or generate a larger tax base.
Well, I also think that the departments need to start working on their budgets now. I mean, when we got to this point last year, we said that should have been taking place in June and July, at least you're heading-
September, worst case.
Yes, you're heading those conversations, so that by the time we come to you in September and say, hey, what does that look like, you can at least provide us with a rough draft. And that's not happening, we're not seeing that, and we need to see that.
Well, to me, we talk about budgets and money all year round. I mean, my, my thought was, budget, working on the budget should be full council. That way, everybody gets to see everything. You know, what Chief's department's asking for, you know, nothing to hide. I mean, they're asking for equipment, and training, and staffing, and pay, everything. You should have full council, full finance meeting, however things on the table. Not three people looking at it, then, you know, different people coming from different directions, so.
No, I think you need your committee to listen.
I do, but-
Set a council, they get everyone from council, you get the same packet that we get, with line item, because we always ask in the last few years, you know, could you specify, you say capital projects, let's say the part thirty thousand dollars capital proven, what is for what?
For what?
Thirty thousand dollars for what? And we start asking them for line item of all the items, and all the big purchases, hate to get the bills and see that, you know, you purchased ninety thousand dollar Corvette or something there, I mean, you don't, you don't like, I mean, I mean-
Now we have, now we have your attention.
It was, it was, it was a capital project, you guys didn't know it, I mean, it wasn't specified in there, so we like to kind of find all this stuff out ahead of time.
Can you get that insurance program? Bear's Corvette? For free.
Kind of figure out what we're at.
That's the last item I had.
He's still on his report.
Administrator's report, then.
I don't have anything other than the water tower deal, if anybody has any questions about the sides.
Did you get an answer on which direction that's facing?
I think, I think in the best, well, it's up to us, but after looking at it a gazillion times, I'm thinking of like northwest side and the southeast side.
So it will be on two sides?
Yeah.
West, southeast?
You'll see it coming down forty-nine, going south.
Yeah, coming on to-
And you'll see it when you walk out of the hospital.
Yeah, and you'll see it as you come in.
Do you mean, sorry, Hicksville Edgerton? It'd be northwest, so like if you're coming into Industrial Park or on Hicksville Edgerton, or you're going north on forty-nine or out of the hospital, that'd be, that's what Cory was just saying.
If it's on the other side.
You'd be on the northwest side, which would be, you see coming into town from Hicksville Edgerton, more turning into Industrial Drive, and then southeast side, which would be north on forty-nine, or that, yeah.
There's really no perfect.
No.
Yeah.
And the tank is kind of small, so, you know, we're going as big as we can go. I didn't want to run into a continental Edgerton issue, where they have to cover them and go bigger, because their logos are too small.
When, when will that be tied in? Any, any plans? When it can be operational?
Yeah, it will be closer to the end of the year. Now, the original logo, like you guys see on your paper that it was, you know, the lettering for Hicksville is now nineteen inches in height. The original one they had sent over was twelve inches, so it's just a foot.
You have to climb the tower to shit.
Right, right, and then the, the overall height was, I think it was eight feet, now it's eleven feet, with nineteen inches in height for the, for the lettering there. But that's about as big as they can go until the logo starts to kind of curve back onto that, onto the bowl there.
So the logo closed up the logo?
No.
I was the only one to vote the other way.
So that visibility, there's a, I put a, a visibility chart sheet with on the table there.
So, the tower's a hundred and seventy-five feet to the overflow.
And originally, the twelve inch, twelve inches was five hundred and twenty-five feet, if we're legible. So the nineteen, they're putting us about a hundred, or eight hundred and twenty-five.
You're going eighteen inches?
Nineteen inches.
There's not a scale for nineteen.
Eight hundred and twenty-five feet. They're ballparking.
Extrapolated.
I just repeated.
He did it, he did it, he said it.
Okay, anything else, Cory?
Nothing I would like to say at the moment, no.
What will they all talk about outside?
Not a dang thing.
Okay, any questions for Cory? Administrator's report, or solicitor's report, I'm sorry.
First thing I have is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, a third reading by caption only, an ordinance to levy a tax for fire protection in the village of Hicksville, directing the Florence County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and authorizing additional tax levy for such purposes.
Make that motion. Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Har?
Yes.
Bassett?
No.
Beverly?
No.
Egley?
Yes.
Flipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Next is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve by caption only, an ordinance vacating the main street right away as plotted in Houston subdivision running between lot nine and Houston subdivision and lot three thirty-nine of the others plotted.
Let that float, yeah. Let's that little grassy area. Yeah.
Next is a first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. Done right away.
I'm just pleased that I could-
Is that what we spent? Throwing a little party down there?
Yeah, I am close.
And that's still, that's like your own inventory, right? It's just the books-
Cheryl says she needs that.
Make motion to suspend the rules. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Nope.
Bassett?
Yes.
Flipper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Har?
Yes.
Second, third readings of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen by caption only, ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
Submove. Second. Roll call.
Har?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Flipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Nope.
Uh, yes or no?
No. No.
And last is resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter a loan agreement with Hard Press Copy LLC, and declaring emergency.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Obviously, yes.
Because I'm a part of it.
This goes in one of your buildings, eh?
Yeah.
And you're gonna do the work for them, right?
This is, the way I understand, this is for her business. This is not, this doesn't, isn't for the work.
It's like to purchase-
Equipment.
That's equipment.
Well, that would be kind of hard to track, but you're-
Not according to the meeting. I mean, she had everything bundled out of the equipment she wanted to purchase.
I'm kind of in the dark on this one, I don't know about it.
Well, even the other one, I don't know, I've had people telling me that, that you're
using the revolving loan fund to, to benefit yourself. I said, you can't. Well, you can influence the hell out of them, I said, I don't know.
But it is for equipment, it's on the minutes, like I said, so.
I'll make a motion there.
And that's what the lead is on, is on, but I mean, we've had two of them fail in town in the last year, can another one make it?
We spent a lot of time on this, investigating.
I wouldn't say one of them failed.
Yeah, I'm ready.
There's only been one that left, and that was for other reasons.
It wasn't, because they were failing.
Well, what's his name told me they, they were gonna run a Mandalay in both locations. I was thinking one, give that up, and then the other company-
I think that ended with timing.
There's insinuating circumstances around that.
I, I talked to the guy, I know the guy.
So we had somebody suspend the rules?
Yes, I know.
Second?
Mayor don't wanna talk about it anymore.
No?
Yes.
Suspend the rules.
No, I haven't.
Beverly?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Flipper?
I'm staying.
Egley?
Yes.
Is that enough to suspend the rules? Seventy-five percent of the council to suspend the rules.
Sixty-six point seven.
Sixty-six point seven percent, so that's just the first reading then, that's all that means.
So, if I'm right?
Nope.
Committee, are you approved it?
No, that's the council, it's up to the council.
Well, you talked about it a little more, explain if you didn't, you might have got a yes.
Well, she need no.
Too late now?
Okay, move on. Anything else, Troy?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Troy?
I don't have anything, anything was the enterprise thing, so.
Any questions for the chief?
Are we getting rid of that truck? You might need it.
Don't know.
How can we go about getting it?
We had to probably file, I don't know, got to probably file for the main vehicle.
That's done, uh, one for she, there is she, otherwise. This is up to date, it's at ten o'clock this morning, and we haven't had any run since then, so these numbers are, are true to look at. Again, there were gonna be a dead horse here pretty soon. I need to know whether I start to pursue an EMT for a part-time job. If you say no, don't pursue it, I understand, don't get me wrong, I'm not, my feelings aren't gonna be hurt, because I, I get what's going on here, so. But I'm gonna lose one through pregnancy.
Nice job, Bruce. Nice job.
I know. So.
But she's just gonna be on maternity leave, and was planning on possibly coming back.
Yeah, hopefully she's coming back.
We talked about it, your EMRs, right? They're only running a certain amount of time, they're not-
I'm gonna try to get them to do that. Also, I do have an EMR that wants to become an EMT. Class won't be until November, December, in at least six months, and so a year from now, I might have one come out of the class.
So this part-time position, is it in addition to the positions you currently have?
We lost a part-time position.
So you're just refilling a position that he already has?
No, no, it's, it's an open position.
You had one quit.
You had one quit and was not filled, so it's just sitting there.
So does he have to ask for permission if that, if that's already there?
No.
It's new.
All right.
All right, I'll work on that, and I'll get your budget, I'll start on the budget. Get with Cheryl on how much money she thinks we're gonna have, so.
Well, I think, real quick, I think you should approach it from, A, what you think the department needs. I think that's where you need to start.
Okay.
And then, and then it can be tuned into.
Somebody did it.
It all due diligence, I mean, that's what they all...
That's not a problem, I'll, I'll put a contingency in for a fire truck, that'll go from there. Too bad we can't get it on a, on that car thing, please do. Anyway, they've been busy this month, I mean, really busy, so. It is what it is, and we provide the service, and we have to keep providing a service to them, to the village. And, yeah, line townships, so. Any questions on the numbers, or second? Thank you.
Fiscal all sorts report?
We just have fund status, cash summary, have any reports from the departments. And a review today.
That's all you have?
I have any questions for Cheryl? Okay, mayor's report, this Thursday's the Uber concert series, David Bussing, 7:00, 8:30, drummer chairs. People that sponsor Hicksville Bank, S M T A, farmers and merchants, and Cayman Insurance, so thank them. There'll be no council meeting July the 3rd, unless something comes up, and we might, but for now, we're not planning. The employees, that's not a holiday, it's just not having a meeting. I hope everybody has a great, safe July 4th.
Can you come shut up, real quick, it'll be taking a half hour? I want to thank the beautification committee, the flowers downtown, and what they do honoring going through town. I know the streets department's been out painting and working on some projects. Also, the churches in town, we got a lot of different churches doing outreach with food, giveaway, meals, and different things like that, and a lot of things have been happening in town, I mean, Maiden Park was cool, fireworks and stuff. The concert here, like I said, people coming up town for that, so, okay, I'm done, thanks for those.
You're on a post, I'm done.
I'm good, that's all.
Okay.
I like what you heard, then.
Second, second.
Roll call.
Har?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Egling?
Yes.